A motion to reconvene and to open session from closed session. That motion passed unanimously. We are now. And you are, Ms. Anzavino, do you want to read this into the certification?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
In accordance with provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act in section two point two dash thirty seven twelve, so far as this is the code of Virginia, I move to certify the town council of town of Fort Royal that on this twenty third day of May twenty twenty five, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters awfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Freedom Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered by the town council of town of Fort Royal in the closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies. Two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening this closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the town council of the town of Fort Royal.
Ms. Shnol, do you so certify?
I so certify.
Thank you. Ms. Wolkerston?
I so certify.
Ms. Golden?
I so certify.
Alexandra Long, four, so certified. Thank you. Action items were from closed session. Let's see, would someone like to make a motion that the town manager is hereby requested and instructed to draw up an agreement with Mr. Tim Smith as town manager, town clerk, town treasurer, and zoning official for the town of Fort Royal for a period of one year? Which agreement will roll over until such time as one of the other parties terminates? That the agreement is at will, that the compensation will be fifty three thousand five hundred dollars and per year, and the town will pay the FICA tax on such salary. Further, that it's expected that the weekly hours will be thirty hours. Which amount of hours will vary from week to week. That amongst the duties, the town manager clerk is expected to create and distribute the town minutes, the minutes for the town council, the minutes for the planning commission, and perform other duties as enumerated by that which the town manager presently, Ms. Anzavino, puts into the agreement. Have I left anything out? Thank you. I guess you got that, Mr. Boyd?
Thank you, sir.
Before we close out that motion, Ms. Shnol, do you think there's anything else you need to put in the motion? Well, Ms. Anzavino is going to clean it up.
Yeah, just the at will and things like that.
Does Wolkerston? Does that capture what you think about? Does Golden, does that capture? Thank you. And again, Mr. Anzavino will add clarity and detail to. And the expectation of council is that this agreement hopefully will be completed by our date of our public hearing is June sixth, correct? Yes. And that hopefully, Ms. Anzavino can get the agreement out to us before June sixth.
You'll have it next week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wonderful. And does the council want to wait until the public, that June sixth, to execute? Or if Ms. Anzavino can get, let him go forward and execute? But as we did with the town attorney, Ms. Anz, there will be a period of three days for the council members to review it, and absent an action in that three day period to void or veto, Mr. Anzavino will execute. Does that sound right?
I'd just like to point out that we were hoping for a start date of June sixth.
Yeah.
So that, which is the same day as the public hearing, which will allow him to have two weeks of shadowing Mr. Anzavino. If we wait any longer, he won't have that time.
Okay, well, instead of three days, let's make it one day. But I do want the council members, all council members, to have an opportunity to review it. And if there's something that's great hardship, we can hold a, we'll call a special meeting. But I do not expect that. But again, Ms. Anzavino, I thank you and appreciate that we're all fiduciaries here as council members. And it's our job to look over the health of the best of the town. And as such, we will apply our best efforts.
Well, I think we can do a verbal offer and have people work, so he knows to give us two week notice.
I'm going to call him.
Okay.
Okay, does that sound good, Ms. Anzavino?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Boyd has gotten all this on tape, and we have two tape recorders as well. Now then, who would like to make that motion?
Make the motion.
Ms. Golden? Motion. Would you like to second?
I will.
Is Wolkerston? Second? Motion has been made, motion has been seconded, discussion. Is there any discussion on this motion? Ms. Shnol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Wolkerston?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
The mayor votes yes. Thank you. Motion passed unanimously. Consent agenda, minutes. Do you have the minutes?
Yeah, forty six minutes in the package.
Motion to carry these over to next month?
I agree with that.
There's no way we can read all of these.
I agree with that. There's a motion to carry approval of the minutes to our next. Could we put this in our June sixth meeting?
Did it schedule for public hearing?
Yes. Okay. Motion has been made by Ms. Shnol that approval of the minutes will be June sixth will allow council members to review the minutes. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, Shnol. Motion. Wolkerston, second. Minutes. Active. Could be active on June sixth. Thank you. Motion made by Shnol, seconded by Wolkerston, that we will, the town council will act upon the minutes, June sixth. Discussion. Discussion. Carry on, Ms. Shnol, how do you vote?
Yes.
Does Wolkerston?
Yeah.
Does Golden?
Yes.
The mayor votes yes. Thank you. Now this again. Okay. Financial report. And especially, I did not give them an opportunity to review the financials. Ms. Anzavino, did you review the financials?
Yep, and we still have healthy collections on a monthly basis, and we had minimal expenses, with the exception of me. What you're paying me. You're up to date on all of your expenses. And I have not had an opportunity to talk to accounts, think about changing the format of this report yet. But that's going to be something that I do before I leave. I would also note that in regard to the financials, I've been working with Atlantic Union Bank, and we're getting very close to having everything so that we have access to the accounts. That should, that should have happened by today, but it's probably going to happen probably by Monday.
Really big, big issue that's costing this town is the disposition of those CDs.
Yes.
And what happens is that when the CDs mature, the bank rolls those CDs into something that feels almost nothing for a period of a year.
Yeah, it's typically one percent.
It's less than that.
Well, ones I've seen have been one percent.
I'm saying eight tenths of one percent.
Okay. Well, yeah, you're, because we haven't had access to those accounts, the town has suffered. Because there have been CDs that have expired. I think you had one.
That's about, that could be, cost us about two thousand dollars a month.
Possibly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is a lot of money for the town.
Yes, it is. But if you could make that a priority.
Yeah.
And would, we need a motion to instruct the town manager to reinvest the money. We do it in different CDs because God forbid we, the town might need access to some money. And if we had one great big CD, we'd break the CD and lose our entrance. If we had it in a number of smaller CDs, then we can break one CD but have the others garner the full amount of entrance. Does that make sense? Yeah. Okay. So we need a motion to allow Ms. Anzavino to reinvest the CDs at the greatest rate. And what I love the, kind of various bank to bank, but.
I think we need a motion as he's already acting treasurer.
Well, he's, that's a function, but to actually invest money is, is a specific action.
Yeah.
And Ms. Anzavino would appreciate it that way. He's not on the hook.
We, yeah, and that's typically the way it's done, that the treasurer is your day to day accounting function person. But they recommend investments, but they have.
Kansas Council. Okay. What about the town manager, town treasurer will invest about a third of the money in short term, that's three to four month, and a third of the money into six to six months, twelve month instrument, and a third of the money into instruments which are twelve to fourteen months. How's that?
What is it now?
Pardon me?
I mean, what is it now?
I, I don't have the data to, right now, most of it's probably sitting at one percent for a year. The rates now, and it's a market's influx for a lot of reasons, but anywhere from three, seven, five to four, I've seen four and a four, four and a quarter to four point three. Depends on the time. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Shnol made the motion, and would someone like to second that?
Awesome.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Shnol, second by Golden. And roughly that's a third of the money, short term, third of the money midterm, third of the money, longer term, I say longer term, but not exceed fourteen months.
Fourteen months?
Yeah, and, and those are ranges. Discussion. Discussion. Carry on, Ms. Shnol.
Yes.
Ms. Wolkerston?
Yeah.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
The mayor votes yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Anything else on the financials? Ms. Anzavino?
Oh. You want my recording, right? Or you want something on financials?
Well, if you don't think there's anything else that should be addressed, then we're anxious for your report.
Okay. Okay, this is a pretty typical report. Budget's been advertised. Today was the first advertised notice to approach the budget and the utility rate increase. It's been posted on the door here at town hall. It's been posted in the library. The budget is available over here for the public to review during normal office hours. It will be available in the library for folks during library hours to review. So when the budget's ready, it's done, with the exception of you having your public hearing, making any final changes and adopting as scheduled on the twenty seventh. The utility rate increases have been advertised as well. Those are the ones that you should probably brace yourselves for, for public comment, because you're not increasing anything else in the corporate or general fund budget. But folks might get exercised about that.
Excuse me, could you email Ms. Shnol those documents? And if you could put those on the book page, and most importantly, put them in the glass case at the post office?
Okay.
Yeah.
And really.
Are they going to be this size?
No.
No, the bu, the budget is, the notices are eight and a half by eleven.
Oh, okay, I'll just, for my printer, because I might need, my printer's on the fritz right now.
You don't, you don't have to post the whole budget anywhere other than town hall and one other, we've got it posted at the library, so, and we've got copies in both places.
If you could make me one for the, my printer's on the fritz, and I'll put it in the post office.
Okay.
Okay.
And email it to me and I'll put it on Facebook.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Yes, sir. Okay, the audits, okay. You've got your twenty two, fiscal twenty two draft audit is under quality control with you right now, and it should be ready very soon. So you have your twenty one, twenty two audits, and I'm still working on getting you quotes for your twenty three, twenty four, twenty five audits, and then twenty six audits. I've also developed lists of business licenses, as well as meals tax, and what the level of payments are for your next manager, and a list of perspect, of potential businesses I think may not be in compliance in both areas. And now that you have the town attorney, you can, he can begin kind of a vigorous approach to collecting those monies that are being held. As I noted, with Atlantic Union, matter of fact, I had a conversation with Madeline up there today. She will be in touch with the other signatories on the bank account very soon. She didn't do it today. She's, I talked to her on Tuesday, she's going to do it. She was off Wednesday, so she could get that done soon. But we're very close to having everything back under control with the banks. In regard to her clerk and zoning administrator, our response recruitment, you know where we are on that. Planning and zoning activities, I met with a couple more residents or prospective businesses. I did speak to the manager of the mobile home park where we had all the trash piled up. I rode over there today. That's not really, it's not the most attractive location in the world, and there's a lot of junk out there in the yards. But I did not see any, I saw one overflowing garbage can. He said he would get it straight away, and I didn't see any other overflowing garbage cans. But he and I are going to have a chat next week about the park again. He seems, you know, folks who own property are often very nice to the regulators until the regulators say something. We had a very cordial conversation, but I'll follow up on that next week. You'll have, you'll have a fireworks tent up there on the corner at Royal Farms. Those permits have been approved.
They paid the five hundred?
No, well, they've been, they've been approved pending the payment. And I've sent, I've also sent them over to Caroline County, rebuilding permit for inspection, because you don't want the tent falling off of those.
You don't want the fire going up at a gas station.
I talked to Mr. Salz.
It's not for setting them off, it's just for selling them.
For selling, yeah.
And all the tanks, well, they can be.
And the pass, you shoot them off there, too.
Yeah, they did.
Well, you get some crazy people passing through town, and they want to try them out, I guess.
Another man in my house.
I also talked to Mr. Salz Giver today, and he apologized for it taking so long to get that place cleaned up. He said that he paid the folks upfront, and they're taking their sweet time, and he made a big mistake doing that.
It's the building by the post office?
Yeah, they, they do have a bobcat over there, they've got a debris box over there, they are cleaning it up. He also said, and I know the council noted to me that the building was full of asbestos, he said it's been cleaned. And he had a cert, a certificate that says that the building is clear of asbestos. He's going to send me a copy of that.
It's not clear of rodents.
No.
He still has no back door.
He said somebody, he told me earlier in our conversations that somebody came in and actually stole the back door.
I've been taking pictures of that place for two years, and it's had a back door.
I, I talked a little bit about Rapid Hand Mobile Home Park. This has been, this has been a busy month. You've had three council meetings in the month of May, so I've been busy getting your packets together. I talked to Chris Henley of Mill Creek today. We're going to go on an hourly basis to get your security lined up, get all of your IP addresses turned over to dot gov. Everything's going to be fixed with the system, and he can do it for under the amount that you allocated at the work session. And he is working on, and I, he and I are working on a list of passwords to find. You had four sets of minutes in your council package, you're all caught up on minutes. And I may have some good news on the January meeting. I think I may have found a recording on the other computer. And so, once I've gone through that, it is the January twenty fifth meeting, I will hit that to Ms.
I found the recorder that I used. By the way, I have, that's three recorders there. I have another four recorders. And it's a lot of them, and I, I found a January recording. And I sent it out to you, and I thought I was at the town council or leaked to it.
I don't remember getting it.
I'll look for it.
Okay.
But there exists a recording.
Okay. But Ms. Alferst did a really good draw, job of drafting these up, and if you're concerned about me, you know, spending a lot of time on them, I didn't have to spend a lot of time on them. As a clerk, I'm responsible for certifying them once you adopted them. But I went over them, I read them over real quick, maybe a couple of minor adjustments in terminology, but she did a very good job with it. She was very helpful. Your keys are all, are nearing completion on cataloging. We now have a key cabinet. I've talked to Joe Fordham about maintenance issues. And then I got in your packet, it's the last time I got in your packet, the June schedule drops, or it's going to change once you bring on your new town manager. But I figured I'd get it laid out just in case something happened. So that's, that's my report for the month of April.
Thank you. Next report, planning commission, Mr. Guzik is not here, the planning commission did meet, and if I could, let me show. This is a, oh. Going to catch the camera? It's okay. This is of the entire town. And use these to plan, so when, say, well, this area over here should, should have an architectural review board, or this area over here is where the commercial's going to be, or residential, then you can use these maps. That's the entire map. The great thing about it, and use them many times, the council can use them. Got a question about the mobile home park? We can look at it. This is the macro. And then we have eight maps. Which are in more detail. There's the. And as you can see, it has, we go from one scale down to not necessarily a micro, but, but a scale where you can see more detail. And, and again, it's very helpful when you're trying to plan things out. And we have eight of these that have the detail. The planning commission is working on the planning. Next is action items, kids fishing day to use pier and games for citizens. The Friends of the Rapid Hand Refuge will supply some of the accounts. And he has the date of September fourteenth. So what we need to do, action item, is for the council to vote that the Friends of the Rapid Hand Refuge, that's a hundred and twenty five acre water lake refuge next to us, that they can use the fishing pier September fourteenth. And if we could support that with, I suggest maybe four hundred, five hundred pot dogs, and chips, soft drinks for the kids. And that would be wonderful, if the council will fill in time.
So they're going to take care of the licenses for the day?
What licenses?
Fishing licenses?
I guess so, because someone from the Department of Gaming Inland Fisheries, Fisheries will be there. Usually, it's on one of the days that.
Yeah, because the kids, the fishing, free fishing day is in June. And so, this is in September, it's not going to be on the free fishing day. So I just wanted to make sure that we weren't covering that.
No, we're not, the town's not paying for fishing licenses.
Okay.
But they must, because in the past, someone from gaming inland fisheries has been.
And they may be giving this a waiver.
It could be.
I doubt it.
Ms. Golden, any questions?
No.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion that the Friends of the Rapid Hand Refuge can use the town pier for a fishing day September thirteenth?
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you. It's September thirteenth, that's Wolkerston. Motion, is there a second?
A second.
Golden? Second, thank you. Discussion?
So is that, all we're going to be doing is allowing them to use the pier and giving them four hundred for food? We're not volunteering or any other?
If we can, I'm going to be there to help, if anybody else wants to be there to help. One of the best pictures for the town of Fort Royal is, is some, some kids and, and adult holding up a fish on, on the, on the line. And it's a really great picture, but looking at the, the expressions on the kids' faces, and, and with the river in the background, that's one of the best pictures.
Yeah, so when, when they gave us notice, and we helped on Facebook, I helped promote it, went everywhere, we didn't have any problem filling it up. When there was a problem was when it was kind of last minute, and we didn't really get, and it was kind of kept to just this area, if you open it up. We didn't have any problem filling the slots. So kind of need to know how many kids?
How many?
Yeah, so I mean, if we're advertising, kind of need to know what's our target to get. Because when we did it before, they all called Liz, she signed them up.
Okay.
So who's going to be doing the signup? Who do we refer them to? What's the phone number? There's a little bit.
But the good thing is, we're in, well, we're not talking about front door of June, but we have plenty of time to get it nailed down.
Yeah.
And if anybody here wants to volunteer, I know I'm going to help. I can't do the signup, we can find somebody else who could. But they do have a fishing day, you know, the refuge extends way down below Tapahannock, and most of what they do is in that Tapahannock area. And trying to get them to realize we have this up here.
They also had arts and crafts for like, and sidewalk chalk for the ones that got tired of fishing. So just to be, you know, aware of that.
And, and that includes up to four hundred dollars, right? Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All, uh, Ms. Chanelle?
I say yes.
Ms. Walkerson? Ms. Golden?
Yes.
The mayor, yes. Thank you. Passing out is. Uh, number seven, two, uh, approval, town applying for uh, SEID grant.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. What date was that? I don't see it on here.
September thirteenth.
It's not all there.
It's not all. Uh, Ms. Anzavino would like to talk about the grant.
Sure. Uh, the mayor received, and I, I actually got it after the mayor. Mentioned about a grant through the Southeastern Crescent Regional Commission. And I, I will tell you, in talking to the director of the GWRC, this is probably going to be one of the last federal grants available. It's a fifty percent match grant. It's for the Southeastern Regional Crescent Commission area, which is kind of the eastern part of North Carolina, Virginia. And Virginia has an allocation. We provided you the information provided to us from the uh, from the GWRC. The immediate need for the town is to obtain some money to uh, drill your bore, uh, bore hole, what they call a bore hole. To do your monitoring for your current well. And I spoke to Joey Schible about that and he has a firm estimate, seventy thousand dollars to do the bore hole. And they have to do, they have to do some camera, uh, tele, televising of that. They have to write reports. And so that's included in the cost.
Okay.
That's got to be done by mid twenty twenty six. Uh, I also talked to Joey about other needs that the water system might have. And he said that we currently do not have a SCADA system. And anybody know what a SCADA system is? Okay. This is a remote sensing system. It's uh, supervisory control and data acquisition. Okay? And it tells operators when something goes wrong. Currently, you don't have any reporting mechanism for that here in the town of Port Royal, over to Caroline County, who are your contracted operators. So if the generator doesn't start and the electricity's out, if folks don't have water, they call the county and they say, well, we don't have any water. Well, why not? Well, generator's out. If the pump were out, if the generator were out, if some other part of the system failed, the SCADA system sends an email message and alert to the operator on call and allows him to respond almost immediately. And this is something which the modern world uses. You know, all, almost all utility systems have this today. I was kind of surprised at the cost. I thought it would be much more, but the estimated cost for the SCADA system is seventy five hundred dollars, which is not too bad. Uh, so you've got your permit, uh, which Joey also was kind of forward to me, which we, we do have in the file. Your per permit, and this is for you just to be thinking about, if you're still on the governing body, or maybe you want to begin planning for now. Your permit expires in January of twenty twenty nine. And you will need to begin the application process as well in advance of that, to renew that. And that will require an engineer, so you need to be thinking about that. You have to have a camera survey of well number two, no later than, this is strange, no later than two hundred and seventy days before the permit expiration. So that has to be done by May sixth of twenty twenty eight. Uh, you have to have a possible pumped depth, pump depth determination and reset, no later than two hundred and seventy days before the permit expiration. Again, that's in May uh, of twenty twenty eight. And then the geophysical bore hole has to be completed by mid twenty twenty six. That's the biggest expense. So. Possibility exists for the town to uh, acquire SCADA system, working with Caroline County and have your bore hole done. Working with Caroline County. These are folks who have contracted for Caroline County's uh, bore holes. And your agreement uh, says that the county will carry out the big tasks for you like this, but for your approval. You're not approving the bore holes now, or any cost right now. What we're trying to do is find some money to help pay for the bore holes, and that's what this grant is about. Fifty percent match and.
The problem is, it's a fifty thousand amount, so we have to spend at least a hundred thousand.
Yep.
Or maybe a hundred and ten, to be safe. Uh, the great thing about it is that uh, the town doesn't have to pay the whole load to get. That half of it's paid for. We don't want to do many superfluous uh, actions or acquisitions. Um, but can we think of something that's going to be about thirty thousand more for the water system?
Well, he was saying all these other things that we have to have done.
Says no, no, is it no later? We can do some of these uh, permit issues earlier, earlier. Such as camera work and engaging engineers.
Pumped up.
What else?
SCADA system.
For the water system. Uh, by the way, this purpose application has to begin by maybe come December.
Uh, your pre-application has to be in. Then you have to develop the full application.
Right.
So, you know, and the unfortunate thing is, this just came out. It's really fast tracked.
Uh, I, I got the notice about, I, I was on the webinar and uh, I think there may be two other jurisdictions on the webinar.
Yes.
Uh, so we, we have a good shot at getting this money.
The council needs to act now to say, sorry, do something and authorize the town to submit the pre-application and then move through the application process.
And uh, as Ms. Anzavino pointed out, uh, this, what this does, it gets on the road to an application the town council is not obligated to spend any money. Therefore, would, uh, not to belabor this and to arrive at some action now, would, uh, someone like to make a motion? Which, whereby the town council instructs and authorizes, uh, Ms. Anzavino to uh, submit a pre-application for uh, up to uh, a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand dollars for all those improvements and actions necessary to maintain, handle, enhance our water system. Uh, Ms. Golden made the motion. Uh, again, the uh, town manager instructed and authorized to uh, submit a pre-application to this organization for an amount up to a hundred and ten thousand dollars uh, to uh, enhance uh, and or uh, maintain our water system. Uh, Ms. Golden made a motion. Uh, probably, probably, motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Not second. We have discussions. Any discussion? Yes, that's it. That's it. Uh, any discussion? Uh, Ms. Chanelle, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Walkerson?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
The mayor, yes. Thank you. Motion passed unanimously. Uh, Ms. Anzavino, uh, before you send that out, if I could look at, at the graph and uh, sometimes I have, there's one or two boxes in there of paperwork for the water system that I generated. And uh, I might have another box of them as well, so I'm pretty familiar with it. Might be able to add something.
I haven't looked at the pre application due Tuesday.
Yeah.
So I, I think that shouldn't be too extensive, but I may need some information. I won't be up here to get that information.
Okay, well, again, if you could, uh, if you have a rough draft, you want to knock out and uh, and send it to me.
Okay.
And, and then you can finish it up.
Okay.
Does that sound like a deal?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next is um, five seven point three, Yoots of the Hall by George. And we, the rural transportation committee, which meets quarterly uh, in July, October, and January, and April during the weekday. The uh, Ms. Anzavino, wherever this, but at the George Washington Regional Commission, uh, the Planning District sixteen. There's an organization called FAMPO, Proxford Area Metropolitan Organization for Transportation. Caroline County and King George are members, but they're non-voting. We get no vote at that. To uh, try to rectify that uh, that lack of representation. Uh, GWRC created, uh, and King George and Caroline agreed to form a rural transportation committee. And that would not have any citizens. That would be staff members from King George and Caroline. And they were thinking, what, where could they meet that's kind of in the middle between Carrick, Bowling Green, and King George? And guess what? That's Port Royal. And uh, if the council would be so inclined, it would be very good because it would bring those people here to our town, and if we have a problem, they can experience it firsthand. I have no date specific, but uh, it would be a cooperative effort that obviously they're not going to interfere with our meetings. And um, they'd have to comport their schedule to our schedule. Does that sound okay?
Well.
Pardon me?
Before you ask, Ms. Monica. If we're going to get into having people coming in here and having meetings, are we going to hire someone to clean this place? And fuck the bathrooms and clean the toilet and all that?
I've been trying to find somebody and haven't done, been successful in doing so. I've been working with Joe Fortune, just haven't been successful. But I think you should have somebody come in maybe every two weeks or once a month to do kind of sweep through the offices and the bathroom. I've cleaned the bathroom while I'm here. I've mopped the floor with a sweeper thing a little bit, but you know, that's about with the time I've got.
Right.
It doesn't, you know, I don't, I don't have enough time to really do all of that stuff.
Can we put that on the agenda first?
Well, I've got someone that would probably do it. Um, but we never came, I don't know if we came up with a figure. Did they say fifty for Loretta?
I think so, yeah.
You've got two thousand dollars, I think, in the budget for cleaning.
Well, she doesn't want too much because she's on low income and she don't want to make too much and mess up.
Who do you have in mind?
Loretta.
Oh, okay. I love her. Uh, okay. Uh, if she do it, uh, I guess.
Little ex-girlfriend, but yeah.
Put, put her in.
Friend. Go ahead.
Put her in contact with Ms. Anzavino and uh, 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 I think that's within the purview of your authority and execute.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'll be here next Thursday. If she's available, she can just give me a call.
Okay.
Or she can give me a call during the week.
I'll just walk there.
Yeah.
Whatever. She can come down. I don't, it doesn't bother me.
Okay, uh, the next thing is, do we need a motion, oh, for, for allowing them to use the town hall? Mr. Anspetter, Anzavino, do you think we need a motion?
I think so, because they're, they're going to be utilizing town.
Okay.
It'd be good for council to offer.
And the art of the language is this, that the town of Port Royal is amenable to the use of its town hall uh, or the Rural Transportation Committee of King George and Caroline uh, on a quarterly basis, provided that uh, um, the Rural Transportation Committee will uh, comport to and adhere to the uh, schedule of the town of Port Royal, historic Port Royal, and others that use the town hall. Now, in other words, they have to.
And who will be opening up the door and everything for them?
Uh, I can uh, get it, or Tim Smith will be on board. He'll be living here for a while.
Okay.
And you have a key to town hall, don't you?
I have a key to this door and I have a key to that door.
Well, they're, they're not going to be over there. They're just here. Okay, uh, someone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, uh. Uh, Ms. Walkerson? Motion seconded by.
I'll second.
Golden. Uh, and that's uh, Rural Transportation Committee. Okay, uh, discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Chanelle?
Yes.
Ms. Walkerson?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
The mayor is unanimous again. Thank you. Uh, discussion items, future town festivals.
Well, Mr. Guzic is not here. Um, and David has resigned. So both David and Mr. Guzic have been the ones that were pushing to have this done. What is it?
Skip five point, seven point.
I'm sorry, uh, I, I, we added uh, item five, seven point four. Extend uh, the uh, agreement with uh, Mr. Jeff Boyd. Uh, when we hired you, Jeff, it was for a six-month trial period. And if you're agreeable, we'd like to extend that for a year.
Right.
Okay, and, and a hundred and fifty is okay with you?
Probably a four-year.
That's good? Okay, uh, so is there a motion to extend the contract, Mr. Jeff Boyd?
Um, motion.
One year at a hundred and fifty of a meeting, provided they're on a Friday. Or, or a date that, that, that we can all agree on. Uh, motion made by Chanelle. Uh, who wants to second that?
Second.
Seconded by Walkerson. Uh, discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Chanelle?
Yes.
Ms. Walkerson?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
The mayor votes yes. Uh, unanimous. And, and would they, great big thank you. Rose, thank you. We're at future town festivals. Ms. Chanelle, you have a four.
All right, so as I was explaining, uh, Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Guzic, um, were really pushing for festival to return to Port Royal. However, um, Carrie from HPR has contacted me and I put the meeting off waiting for David because he was in the hospital when she called. And I was like, we're not even going to schedule anything. So, um, like to know if there's anybody else that would like to be a part of this meeting with HPR? Um.
If I could. Move, if, if, if I can, I'll try to be.
It's a discussion at this point.
And, and I don't want, if there's another council member that wants to do that, because we only have two council members together. We can't have more than two. Therefore, uh, I'm willing, if my work schedule, Proxford allows, to participate.
Well, it'd have to be out of work for me, too.
Yeah. Uh, I don't want to take it away from somebody else. They really want to be part of this.
Because they really want to, they wanted to do it this fall. And I was like, there is no way.
Yeah, I mean, they were saying like next, next year or something.
Yeah, next year, um, to do a festival. What, they probably want to do more than one. They are really wanting to get involved with this, and they said they're going to shelter it fifty percent. So we shall see what that means in their eyes at this point. So, um, I mean, if somebody else wants to go and do it, that's fine with me, too. Um, anybody wants to take this on?
But you have the most experience.
Yeah, I do, and I'm happy to be like a consultant.
Okay, I, I understand. Okay, anything else on that issue?
Uh, no, that was it. It's just an exploratory meeting with HPR to see what they mean by being a fifty-fifty partner with us. And, and what they want, because you know, in the past, when we've done things, HPR is wanting to keep things separate. But we have new, with Carrie being uh, the president now, it sounds like they're, and Bill being so active, it sounds like they're moving forward. So there could be a real joining of the town and HPR.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, any questions on this issue from all the council members? Hearing none. Uh, next is resignation of council member Carpenter. Uh, is there a motion to accept the resignation of David Carpenter?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
No second.
Uh, discussion?
Um, for um, public.
For public information, is it okay to post that he has resigned due to personal issues?
Sure.
Because I think we need to make that notice.
Yeah. Yeah, since you don't get great news coverage out here, nobody will know about it.
Right, and, and I try to put things on and people are reading them. Because I, I got lots of comments about, I think Port Royal needs to come into the twenty-first century.
I'm sorry, what?
That we need to come into the twenty-first century.
We're being videotaped and it.
Well, that was new, this was in January.
Okay.
He started February.
Yeah, but we're, we're, we're doing, this, this town is, is, is doing great things and we've accomplished great things, and we're going to do greater things.
And Mr. Anzavino has made a lot of suggestions for improvements, and Angie with the playground and the signage and I mean, there's been a lot of stuff going on lately.
Okay.
A lot of work, too.
Going back to the point, we have a motion by, who made the motion?
I did.
Nolled.
To accept David Carpenter's resignation due to personal reasons.
Okay, and who seconded?
Me.
Wolkerston. Okay, motion made, motion seconded, discussion. Ms. Knoll, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Wolkerston?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Mayor votes yes, another, passed unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Anzavino will lead us into what happened.
Okay, I've got to notify the circuit court that he has resigned. That will trigger a forty-five day process where the town council can make an appointment, or the circuit court will make an appointment. And typically would like the town council to make the appointment. I provided a memo for you here in the packet, and I did send it to Mark Flynn because I didn't want to be issuing a legal opinion when I'm not a lawyer. But on page two of the memorandum, it's got to be completed within forty-five days, so the vacancy occurred. You know, he resigned on May twentieth, that's when the clock started ticking. I don't know how you've done it in the past, but if you would try to solicit applications or letters of interest, I think that's a good way to do it from your citizens, to send it to the clerk, and the clerk can just provide that to the entire council. Because the council has to have a decision, you have to have a public meeting where you discuss the candidates and list out all of the candidates before you make the appointment, if you do make that appointment. That all has to be done by July fourth, despite chances.
Could it be forty-five days from the date the circuit court is noticed?
That I don't know.
Well, since you don't know it, let's hang our hat on that.
Well, okay, give you a couple more days, but it's still a pretty tight process.
It is, it is.
And, you know, it, it's up to y'all as elected officials to generate enthusiasm to serve on the council for the vacant position.
And that, that should be put on the Facebook page.
Yes.
And how do we handle this? People give, I guess, provide the contact information for the town manager, Ms. Anzavino, and
I thought he said that letter to the interest had to go to the
Clerk.
Clerk of?
No, 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 it's the clerk of the town.
Of Port Royal?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought we, just thought you meant.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So you'll notice the circuit court Tuesday, and then our forty-five days will click from there. And try to get people to know that, see, we used to be a council of seven, and I would go around and ask people, do you have a pulse? And, and if you're alive, would you serve on town council? Because getting seven people to serve was incredibly difficult, that's why we went down to seven. And so we'll see, and let's see.
This is the first time I remember having to go through all this.
They changed the statutes.
Yeah, usually we just say, okay, well, we have an opening, you want, okay, well, come on in, we'll vote for you.
Yeah.
That's how we, we work.
So, but we want to make, one, number one, it has to be open to everybody, number two, it has to be transparent. And, yes, ma'am.
And they have to be a registered voter in the state of Virginia. And live in the town or, you know, the vicinity of Port Royal, they can't live like outskirts of Port Royal.
They have to be a resident of this town.
Yeah.
And that sometimes is hard to explain to people, because I have had people from Port of Bay call me and say, I live in Port Royal.
Yes. Well, I think that, sending out pills for the
Well, we're downtown Port Royal. And if you're not downtown, you're uptick. Everybody understand that? So we, we've done all that.
So John, are you going to make it another, that you'll send the mail, do I need to craft something?
I'll, I'll craft something.
Okay, and you're also, he has the one page, you're going to make, before we leave tonight, Monica, a couple copies of the notice that you have out here on the door, so she can put it in the post office.
You got, you got a copy in your package there for the post office.
Okay, great, great.
It should be the last page.
Yeah, I might have to take some stuff down.
But if we can get that in the post office and then
I will send you the ads for the budget stuff.
Okay. Dominion Energy, I guess these information items.
Andy, other question?
I'm sorry, I remember David was supposed to get us, to get, I was supposed to come to give us the different relayer what do you call it, instructions for demonstration, and now that he's gone, we still don't have.
It would be a good thing to do. I've had heart surgery and I don't, maybe nobody wants to resuscitate me. But yeah, it would be helpful, you never know how Rupert's Q turns.
It could be anybody.
Yep.
Do you think JP would ask, or JP, or David J. K. would?
Yeah, maybe David doing his mind, yeah.
We'll get to the federal.
Those things.
Thank you, on, on the agenda for next month. And Ms. Anzavino, you have the floor to briefly, briefly discuss Dominion Energy and all my work with Rivers.
Oh, we're not four-year terms.
I know, I, I, I'll correct that. Hey, you're one of the few that aren't four-year terms. But that was my mistake, I'll get that corrected. Okay, very quick, did you need a copy of the schedule?
What's it look like?
That's the post.
The new one, yes.
At the office and online.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, my printer just died today, I'm not with her now.
There are five different mailings from Dominion Energy on rate increases, and they're each about forty pages, so it's proposed to make a copies. They're in my office if you want me to. There's two on May first, there's two on May sixth, and there's one on May fourteenth, so if you want to take a look at it, I provided your sheet in here, what they're bound in general terms, so if you want to cite to, please drop by. You also have an article in here from the American Rivers Foundation, which are America's most endangered rivers in twenty-five. I sent you the full copy in your electronic packet, I only gave you the Rappahannock River in the first three pages, because it's a very long report, it's a color report, it takes quite a bit of labor out of the copier. The Rappahannock is one of the endangered rivers, and it's a riverous river, and it's one of ten in the United States. And it's primarily because of the fact that you've got a lot of development going on, so.
Actually, a little jurisdiction that we're ignoring, Stafford County, Port Royal, Rappahannock. Stafford, Spotsylvania City, Frederickburg, all three of them, but what they do is they do high pump. That when the river is at a high stage of flow, they would pump water and push it into reservoirs. The Caroline County has had an application for withdrawal of water from the Rappahannock for over eleven years. Eleven years, and they spent a couple million dollars on it. Originally, DEQ said, load it up with whatever you think like use of waters, and Caroline County included that. Then there was a proof back on that, then the application was amended to remove that. Then Senator Stewart tried to get a bill approved in the legislature which would prohibit, prohibit into basin transfer, which means no water from the Rappahannock Basin over to the Matapanai Basin where bowling green and from the third draw. That failed. The water that the town port role might use ten years, fifteen years into the future, comes from that wooden floor permit. If DEQ stays on the course it is and allows jurisdictions east of us, Hampton Roads, North of area, to continue to pull the asset down, and there are more boats down there than there are up here, so they, lately they have the power. Then I don't know what the town is going to do, ten, fifteen years out into the future. I, I serve on the committee with Fort AP Hill and suggested that we have a reservoir on Fort AP Hill. Do what these other jurisdictions do, which is high-flow pump with the reservoir, and they kind of short that off. I'll speak, yeah, probably, all this comes to the head, but what you need to keep in mind is like, you don't wake up one morning and say, I want to pull water from the river for a jurisdiction, takes a decade or two. And it's something that the journey begins now, they've been embarked on for over a decade. That's my take on it.
Then there's one last item in the package. It's an invitation, an email invitation, says May seventh, twenty-twenty-six, which is when they're going to have it. The business appreciation dinner for Caroline County will be at Matapanai Springs at the bar, so put that on your calendar, it's about a year out.
And I, I'm married to the supervisor, so I went to the I had a couple weeks ago. And it's interesting, they had the president of Rappahannock Electric, like the place, informed us about like that, some of the uses of electric. And it was, it was forward. Anything else?
Good job.
Thank you, Ms. Anzavino, thank you for being here, thank you for your good works, and is there any other business to come before this town council?
Just one thing.
Yes, sir.
Just occurred to me, this is probably my last council meeting with you folks.
Say it again, sir.
Yep, well, you know, I've been, we have the public hearing on the budget.
Yeah.
But this will be the last council meeting, working with you, so it's been a pleasure working with you all and being in Port Royal and, you know, helping you all out. There's, there's a lot of work to do here to get to where you need to be. But it's not something that you folks should shy away from, because you've got a good little community here, you've got a lot of potential, as I said at the first meeting I was at. It's just a matter of sticking to it, following through, and realizing that there's going to be some bumps along the road.
Always are.
Yep, but it's been my pleasure to, to work with you all, and, you know, I'll see you around.
People, we can stand up and give them a round of applause.
Cheer my meetings, I said, stand up and go home. Yeah, it's very kind of you. It's my pleasure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for all your help.
Yes.
Is there any other business to come before this town council? Is there any other business to come before this town council? Harry, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Ms. Wolkerston made the motion, I don't think Congresswoman Ward, you need to second that motion.
I don't know, we, we all do.
Okay, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
We're sure, it is seven fifty-five, got you out of here before you.